We are.
All right, good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here on a Monday morning for our operating budget discussion. So with that, I will bring the special meeting of council for the purpose of budget to order. And the first item is adoption and receipt of agenda items. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Council Arneson, second by Council Whitmarsh, any discussion, call the question, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Thank you. And the next item, only item on the agenda is presentations. And this 2021 draft operating budget presentation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Backen, who will introduce Ms. Ruff, who will provide us with the workshop or presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. I'll just set the scene a little bit, and then we'll turn it over to Sandra, to Sam and Carm to proceed. But first of all, a special thank you to them for their hard work on the budget to date. It's been quite an adventure, and we continue to make progress as we go through this. And this is being Sandra's first time through. She's actually doing exceptionally well, picking up all of the nuances and subtleties of this. And I think in large part, that's due to the support of Sam and Carm. So a special thank you to all of them. Looking forward, what we're talking about here today, of course, is the operating budget. This is, again, only the initiation. What we're looking for at the end of today is really confirmation to proceed to meet on January the 11th, which is a council day, to continue this dialogue. And as well, if we're able to perhaps get some general direction from council in terms of areas that probably are not productive to look at. As you may recall, we have a model that we based upon from last year. The model has certain assumptions. Today, we will unpack some of those assumptions and hopefully start to show or lessen or reduce the need for revenue increases in some areas. But if we're going to bridge that gap, we're looking for direction in terms of council, not so much as to where to look, but where not to look, because there may be certain concepts. And I'm thinking now of the levy system such as being employed in Surrey and being employed in Abbotsford that may not fit for us, at least not at this time. So that helps us a great deal in terms of narrowing the field if we're going to be proceeding to try to find ways to bridge the gap. So today, we're going to have an overview of the utilities budget, the operating budget. As well, we'll touch upon the carryforwards. We've distributed to you the carryforwards as was requested. So you can see those items that were previously prioritized and endorsed by council or councils, because they do go back a little bit in some situations. So we will have those, and we'll also touch upon the items that were referred by council. Again, more of a check-in to see if we're on the right path and to see what additional information might be needed. So we are looking at that as well. And then, after all of that, we'll put back our sheet that has options back up on the screen. As you may recall, during the capital budget process, I think it was slide, might have been slide eight. But in any event, we'll have that up again. It shows the options in terms of what we can look at to bridge the revenue gap. So we will have that. And one of the options that we'll actually even put out there for consideration is, if it's proving troublesome, do we wish to return to a council priorities committee meeting? Notice I said priorities, not processing, to revisit what our priorities should be for this budget session. We have a couple of dates available to us with Mr. McIntosh, merely as an option, because we did have him set for the fall, and because of COVID, we canceled that. So we could use that as a tool, perhaps, to bridge the gap if needed, and if it's not needed as well. But it's through that process, we can identify our existing priorities, our future priorities, transportation, road networks, infrastructure, and as well, the, I guess, the need to perhaps streamline our inquiry response processing. We're getting more and more inquiries from the public. That can be a good thing. But it's taking more and more resources to process those. So we want to make sure that we have that staffed and prioritized as needed. So those are some general thoughts, general overview for council as a whole. And we can now get into some of the more of the details. So we'll begin with the utilities presentation by Sandra. Sandra, I hope you're out there. I can see your name up there. So we can turn it over to you to begin, and then I'll chime in, providing color commentary as needed.
Just a quick question. What page would this be in our budget draft?
Sorry, councillor? Do you mean the presentation?
Yeah, what page are we? Is there a page we're referring under the draft 21 budget, the document we have?
So it's up on the screen. Sandra, do you want to lead us here? Or councillor, is that the page you're looking for?
I don't see a page.
So it's on the screen. It's number one in the bottom right-hand corner? It's up the presentation.
I think what Mr. Backen, Worship, we don't have the, this presentation in our package is what I'm hearing, right?
No, it was.
Yeah, that's fine.
Combined it all. Suzanne combined it into one document.
I believe it starts on page 82 of the package for the presentations. Both of the presentations have been put into one package.
Should be a user pay tab.
Page 82 in our, in our first package that came to us. It's in Granicus. It's the first one. But it's all sideways. Yeah, I had to import it into PDF so I could turn the pages.
How did you do that, Bob?
So I save it to PDF Expert, which I, which I have. I've had that ever since we started this electronic thing. It's a good program to have or something like it. But PDF Expert is easy. When you import it into PDF Expert, then you have it.
Oh, okay.
And then you can open up the screen and rotate certain pages.
Do you do that on your iPad or?
On the iPad, yeah.
So then I could probably do that on my computer, but okay, I'll have to.
Yeah, you should put up PDF on your iPad.
It's kind of, you know, going like this with my iPad.
Oh, yeah. But you can download it as an app.
Yeah.
Maybe Ms. Baugh would give you the credit card. Or you could use your credit card. Sorry.
So we'll, we'll take this, I think what we'll do is ensure that staff provide some information to council on how to import this and flip it.
That'd be great.
I don't want to digress, but I don't know if we're having a bit of a break now. But this happens on all of our council genses. If they could somehow just get all the pages to be landscape that are supposed to be landscape.
Easier, okay.
We get that development applications as well. It's very confusing.
Yeah, we'll pass that on. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll let Ms. Ruff take over and begin the presentation on the user pay utilities. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship and members of council for having us here today. I have Sam and Carm with me to help answer any questions that we have. First, we were, Mr. Backen touched on this already. We were revisiting the schedule, so we're at December 14. And we, he mentioned about returning on January 11th for further discussion. So we'll move right into, this is the user pay utilities budget. And so just to look at revenue and cost drivers, it's just an overview of the sources and the expense drivers.
Sandra, the pages on the screen aren't flipping, so I think you skipped over the first one. I don't think it's changed over. So that would be slide two. It's not on the screen yet, and then you're going on to slide three.
All right. Okay, sorry, technical difficulties. So this again is the budget timeline, which we will come back to at the end again. So this is a slide of just an overview of the revenue sources and expense drivers. Remember that these are the user pay utilities. So we have user fees from water, sewer and solid waste. And we also have the growth related to new development for revenue sources. We have salaries and wages, including steps and increments, all of the special contracts for water, sewer and solid waste. And in addition, we have expenses for maintenance contracts and asset management, including the reserve and CTCs. So just, this shows the relative values of the items that were discussed in the previous slide. So sale of services, obviously, the highest revenue generator, followed closely by new growth. And then on the expense side, it's the regional district charges, which we will talk a bit about, that are the largest driver of expenses, followed closely by wages. So every year, we just look at some of the issues and challenges we have when bringing the budget together. And then there will be a more, a little bit more detailed slide on each one of these. So this year, the regional costs for includes GBS and DND and Grid Vancouver Water District, as well as the metro tipping fees. We have salaries and contracts, salaries and wages, QPs in place until the end of 2020. And then we have the operating impact of capital and community development contributed, as well as other infrastructure costs.
Thank you. Have a question from Council Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, very, very quick question on you. You quickly went over the new growth. Yeah. Is there a percentage in the new growth, or you just put a number down with your bar graph?
There are percentages in each area of new growth. They are slightly different. So we're anticipating new growth in water of 4.35. Sewer of one point, or sorry, of 2%. Sewer of 2% and solid waste of 2%.
And that's all new growth?
Yes.
Okay, well, we'll look at that later. Thank you.
Your worship, I had a question on that past slide.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah. So if you can go back, it says salary and wage contract settlements. It says in place until 2020. Well, of course, we're moments away from the end of 2020. So does that mean we're having a new settlement? Or there'll be a new contract and wage settlement coming up very soon? Or can you explain? It says until 2020. It doesn't make sense because we're done with 2020.
It ends at this spot. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. It's a very astute question. Right now, our collective agreements are expiring in December 31st, these QPs. The pattern in the region is being established. So what, what we've done in this circumstance is we've taken a combination of historical and a combination of what the pattern is to try to build in an adjustment. We build in adjustments into the budget, anticipating what the increases will look like. So we're not trying to play catch up later. So what you see there is anticipated settlements, I suppose, without being too specific as to what the region is up to.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
So first, we'll talk about the regional costs. So GBS, DND is the sewage fees from metro, and there was the seven. Sorry.
Thank you. It's the water district. You're on the water district.
Sorry, this is the water district. So this was a, a planned contribution for the Jericho Water District, which is now in, it's a multi-year project. So each year, we add 818,000 to the base budget, because we have three balloon payments to be made in 2023, 2024 and 2025.
So your worship, this bears a quick comment. What, what staff have been doing for some time is rather than having a, a large spike in any one of those years, we've been trying to, I guess, graduate the curve, make it less significant. So for a number of years now, I think back as early as 2019, we've been putting away basically a sum that at the, by the time the, the amount comes due, we'll have built into the base budget an amount that will actually pay those sums without having to necessitate further, I guess, increases in the utility. So we're, we're rather having a spike. We're effectively leveling the curve.
Thank you. Council Whitmarsh.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just a question on that as follow-up. So there, there's three, three balloon payments coming in 21, sorry. I forgot the years here. There's a, so 23, 24 and 25 is being built into the base budget. At the end of 25, we will have completed the payment. So does that mean we then end up having a 4.1 million surplus now in the budget?
So your worship, in theory, that could be the case. And in fact, we think there likely would be a bit of a surplus, but also going on in that, well, five-year period, there may be other costs that we are called upon to, to absorb. So I think you're on the right track by indicating that by being fiscally responsible, we can level the curve. And at the back end of it, hopefully, there is a, a reduction. But we hesitate to commit to it, not knowing what may happen between now and 2025 in terms of other, other needs.
Right, okay. Yeah, I guess that was my question was that in this particular item, we would have completed the payments, leaving this 4.1 million in the budget. But I appreciate there's lots of other costs, but that certainly will be helpful to know that we have that in the budget after 2026 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. You can carry on, Ms. Ruff.
Sorry, I'll just go back to this slide and spend a little more time on the other regional costs. So the GBS, DND is the sewage from metro. And we had a 7.4% increase this year from 9.1 to 9.8 million included in the budget. And the GVWD is the water from metro, and overall, there's a 3.5% increase, which actually was less than what we had anticipated in prior years. They brought it down due to the impact of COVID. And we are impacted in this area both by rate and by the volume of water purchased, so dependent on wells that are in use. As well, we have solid waste. The metro per ton tipping fee was up three and a half percent this year from $113 per ton to $117 per ton. And going forward, we expect, are anticipating a $7 per ton increase through to 2025. This is the salaries and wages this year. So general contract increases in each of the areas, as well as for QP, as well as the steps and increment adjustments and the impact of benefits on each of the areas and the overall percentage fee increase.
Question. Go ahead. I don't see it. Okay, Council Ferguson, I see your hand up, yeah.
Oh, yes, thank you. Now, looking at the salary and wages, is this part of negotiations, if I may, and is this set in stone? Or how does this, and how does this pact our budget, our final discussions regarding budget percentages at the end of the day?
Thank you, your worship. These, these are not intended to represent contract increases, but instead reflect the amount that the user would see because of the categories that are above. So it's not to suggest that it's a 0.5% tax increase or, or user fee increase. What it simply says is that we expect the overall revenue needs to grow because of these categories, contract, steps, increments, adjustments and benefits, to have an overall impact on the utility as you see, 0.53, 0.5 and 0.30.
Council on?
Yeah, so this is truly thousands of dollars. So you're saying that the benefit increase is 11,000 in water? Because it says in thousands. I just want to be clear what I'm reading here. Is 11,000 or 11?
Yes.
Thousands, yes, 11,000. Okay.
So this is the impact of operating impact of the township capital construction for, that will be added in the current year. And so this one is in full dollars. So in total, in sewer, we'll have 75,000, and then water will have 95,000. And this is the operating impact, again, in full dollars of contributed assets on our operating budget. So then we'll touch on the infrastructure costs from in, from operating funds. So the majority of this is the contribution to capital that we provide in, in the form of funding for capital projects. So we have an operating amount, which we contribute each year to fund the different projects. In water, that's 781,000. In sewer, it's 243,000, and in solid waste, it's 50,000. These are all consistent with prior years. We haven't increased our contribution to capital in the budget this year.
Council Ferguson has a question. Council Ferguson?
Well, you, you did talk a little bit about water here, Sandra. I just wanted to say that we had a discussion at one of our CPC meetings regarding water. I wanted to know, is, decision has to be made on that regarding upgrades to wells, water service, Metro Vancouver, other things. Is that incorporated in the budget as a flagged item, or we still have to discuss it, if I may?
The, the amount, the, you mean the Brookswood and Murrayville water situation?
That, the upgrades, potential upgrades or potential construction of new pumps and new, whatever it is regarding water and well systems.
So there is a capital project included in the capital budget as well. There is a one time that we'll be seeing a little bit later in this presentation for the water, to, to purchase the water well. So the, the increase in the volume required is not included in this part of the budget.
Okay, my last question is, how soon will we be making the final decision? When's that coming back, if I may? Maybe the Mark or Ramon or yourself?
You mean the, the Brookswood, Murrayville Water, we'll probably get that back early, early in the new year, CPC meetings.
Because that's going to affect, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's going to affect the budget, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Backen.
Your worship, just to, to provide some comfort, we've tried to, I think, and cover it both ways. And I'll explain briefly how that's being done. It, it needs to be advanced prior to conclusion of the budget. In one of the subsequent slides, you'll actually see a use of, I think, capital or sort of, not capital, a fund that we can bridge that gap potentially for one more year. So we have that, that potential option. But a resolution then would be ideal. So we're coming to the precipice of whether we can make additional investment of a capital nature and perhaps moderate our long-term costs versus acquire the service or the water from Metro Vancouver. And to do so, we would have to begin to adjust our, our rates. But at this point, we're using a, a reserve account for, for the water to accommodate that option. So council effectively has both ways. They can, they can proceed if they so wish.
Okay, thank you.
Council on?
So a policy question, which I think is appropriate at this time, because we're talking about those treatment plans. That was discussed at a priorities meeting or a policy meeting or, or a committee of the whole. But council can make a decision anytime on that, even though it's been deferred and kind of got lost a little bit, if you don't mind me saying, in that process, that sides process that we have with these other meetings. And of course, I, you know, looking at the, at how important it is to the budget. So maybe, I don't know if we need a legal advice or however this would go. But certainly, it would seem to me that council can make a motion at any time to proceed with that, aside from what the process committee is up to.
Your worship, that's, that's effectively correct. As, as I recall, I think it went to the CPC and then it was, I think, referred back to the budget process. I'd have to check that. I'm not, not sure. But whether it sits at CPC or sits at, with this budget meeting, council at any time can review the matter, pick up with it, choose a direction, pass or defeat any, any motion, because we're setting these meetings up as being special meetings of council for budget purposes. So that residual jurisdiction does exist.
Yes, but, but your worship, it wasn't deferred unfortunately to the budget process. It was referred to further process meetings.
That's correct, so.
It kind of locked in, in that stream. Okay, well, we should keep an eye on that one, I think.
So perhaps, Mr. Backen, we could add it to the January 11th. If, you know, we do have scheduled the January 11th for, for the council discussion. So that, that could be brought forward as a CPC and then, you know, quick CPC meeting to discuss it. What are your thoughts on that?
We could certainly schedule it for the 11th. We'll have to go and, and determine whether or not we can advance it directly to council or such as the presentation or whatnot. But I think it'd be prudent to continue the dialogue on the 11th and by whatever process we think is appropriate.
Yeah, yeah. Thank, thank you. Those are my thoughts, because it is an important decision that we have to make moving forward. If we can do it sooner, the better. If it is in this budget, great. If we're deferring it to another budget, but council needs to have that discussion. So we can advance this on the 11th for a quick CPC and then, then into the budget. That may be one way around, but we'll, we'll just, I'll discuss it with staff and come up with a solution.
Down the drain if we defer it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, Ms. Ruff.
Thank you, your worship. Also included in the infrastructure costs are transfers to reserves, surpluses, our cost of debt servicing for assets in place and general asset maintenance. So we'll take a high-level look at the changes in the budget by cost and revenue categories. So salary and wages, we had looked at previously between contract increases, steps, increments, adjustments and the extended benefits. We have a service contract, a number of service contracts, which have also gone up in water and sewer. The regional water purchases, we discussed previously, amount to 114,000 in water and 700,000 in sewer. Waste, organics, collection and disposal is revision to all our projected costs of 153 in solid waste. The operating impact of development is, as previously discussed on the previous slides. Jericho interest payment is internal debt that we make a payment from. Principal comes from DCC, but the interest comes from the user pay utility. As discussed, we have the Jericho prepayment phase two, which is 818,000 in the water utility. We had some reduction in debt payments this year. It was a 10-year renewal on a, two of the loans, which resulted in an increase in interest rate on the renewal. We have administrative overhead, which is the charges for things like HR, finance, IT that are not specifically identified and costed to the utilities, but are a cost to the township. So a percentage of cost is allocated to them. And then we have some miscellaneous supplies and other. And then we have the rate stabilization adjustment, which is where we transfer to and from the reserve in order to maintain more stable rates. And this year, we did that in both sewer and solid waste. And I believe solid waste, we've been doing that, the five-year plan to stabilize those rates into the future. And then below, we show the increase, the revenue increase or decreases, which includes various revenue changes, which can be fees and excess user fees from growth.
So can we go back to the reduction in debt payment? You said there was an increase, but if we renewed the loans, the, it, it shows in brackets. I'm wondering if it was a decrease due to interest rates or was it?
It was a decrease.
A decrease, and would that be because of more favorable interest rates?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for clarification.
And then we have, so we have a total of our change before growth. And then we show our growth. And sorry, I was mistaken on our growth projections when I stated them previously. Water and sol, water and sewer are both projected at 2%, but solid waste is projected at 3.87, which results in our non-discretionary budget changes of about $1 million in water, 280,000 in sewer. which results in our non discretionary budget changes of about a million dollars in water, two hundred and eighty thousand in sewer and solid waste is is kept static.
Question from Counsel Kuntz.
Yes, thank you. Here we go. I had a question about the rate stabilization adjustment. And if you could just explain to me how that works and yeah, that was my question.
So each year, we either put money into the reserve or take money out of the reserve to maintain more stable rates for the users because because of fee increases and times when we know we're going to have fee increases from outside sources, we try to put money aside so that we don't have large spikes and valleys in our user pay utility rates.
Okay, so we're going to have to replace that money with another transfer to the reserve to keep that one floating properly, I would imagine.
We are sometimes using previous transfers as well, right? For years when we were able to move money into the reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we had previously touched on this. This is the water purchases that we will make from Metro Vancouver and we're estimating those to be about one point four two five million. These are in our one times, so they are dependent upon adequate prior year surplus availability and also would depend on what happens with that, those wells.
Okay, so this takes us to a resolution to refer the twenty twenty one utility user pay budget to a special budget meeting of council for further consideration, discussion, approval as received or amended. So.
So move.
Counsel Ferguson, second. I can't see a hand, so you have to.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Whitmarsh. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
Your worship, now might be an opportune time just to confirm availability for January the eleventh. That is a council day, but as you've seen in the timeline, we're looking at the eleventh. It's not part of the resolution. So but we have some flexibility, but we may want to just make sure that works for all those that are present.
Well, I wonder if we could have amended that to make put the eleventh in there.
Your worship could do, or there'll also be a chance with the operating budget as well. So it will be coming up again.
And also, does council want to have a special council process committee meeting to further discussion on the water prior to this meeting? It might help. Then moving into the meeting would would have although the we we could then take that decision into a council meeting and then it would impact our our utility budget. So perhaps a but a resolution to schedule a CPC meeting for the purpose of the Brookswood, Murrayville Water discussion and then following that, the special meeting to continue the user pay operating budget. So if somebody would like to make that motion.
For the eleventh, I'll move that. So and we're looking at ten AM, I guess, are we?
I'll second that.
Staff will schedule that.
We're already meeting.
Okay, so move.
It would be early in the day, wouldn't it? Yeah.
That's right. So move by counsel along, second by Counsel Kuntz, discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. So let's add some clarity. Thank you. Okay, we'll carry on.
Worship, disappointing water here.
Yes.
Is Counsel Woodward in the meeting here? I I don't, I guess he's voting affirmative if he's not voting against it.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, it's I'm asking.
There he is.
Thanks a lot for your concern there, Counsel.
Okay, good to see her. And then another one says council. Is that somebody we know? Was Counsel?
That's one of that's one of the boardroom. It's Fraser River Presidential Theater Council. Ms. Ms. Bauer can explain.
The computer that shows up as as council is the one that actually puts out the web feed.
Okay, okay. So then Counsel Davidson, Counsel Richter, not not at the meeting.
That's correct. Okay, we'll carry on.
So thank you, your worship. We're just getting caught up. Now we're going to move into the operating budget. So this is our effectively the second presentation. Ms. Bauer, would you know what page this is on in their package? Would help a little bit.
It begins on page ninety nine.
That was page ninety nine.
Yeah, it's just carrying on in the same presentation, in my in my package, anyway.
Yeah, so it's it's next presentation on universal services.
They've all been nicely adjusted for landscape.
Okay, so Mr. Backen, do you want to introduce this and then?
Your worship, just as we referenced before, Sandra will take us through the the operating and then we'll we'll come back to some of the previous items around the list. So Sandra, over to you.
Sorry, I'm just getting it set up.
That's fine.
Thank you again. Again, we have the budget timeline as part of this presentation. I think we can probably get through that. So this is the larger budget, so has very similar items from our revenue and cost drivers as our user fee budget, our property tax increase, revenue from growth is just from new development. Other user fees and charges are from items like recreation, which we will discuss further on how we're going to deal with the recreation budget in later in the presentation. And rentals and leases and permits and licenses are in other user fees and charges. Salaries and wages, same issues with QP and IAFF as well as steps and increments. Special contracts in this area are RCMP, FVRL, even though that is presented as a separate levy, ECOM and recycling. Regional District and Translink are issues with transportation and stormwater. Maintenance contracts for all of the general maintenance that goes on in the township and then the various materials and supplies, equipment and vehicle, and then on to asset management, which includes our contribution to capital and transfers to reserves. So this is just a relative depiction of the value of the different revenues in relation to each other. In this case, we have removed seventy five percent of the recreation revenue. And so that shrinks our our sale of services quite drastically. It would normally be larger than special levies. So this was for the pictorial presentation. It has not been removed from the actual bodies of the budget at this point in time. And this is the relative expenses. Again, salaries and wages are the largest, followed by special contracts and service and maintenance contracts. So again, we'll walk through what we consider some of our issues and challenges and with a slide on each one of them. So we have regional costs including the RCMP, which is our commitment to protective services and the FVRL. Again, FVRL is separated as a separate levy, but we there's this is the only place we'll discuss it. We have salaries and wage contract settlement. So IAFF expired in twenty nineteen and QP again expires at the end of this year. Operating impact of township capital is similar to the user pay categories. And infrastructure costs is our commitment to maintain our assets or contribution to capital, transfers to reserves, and then we'll talk about the recreation center costs, which are the impact of COVID.
Question, your worship.
Counsel along.
You're just trying to get these dates correctly. So because it says again that in place of twenty twenty, so I imagine the contract ends in place till January first, twenty twenty one, kind of a thing, I guess. So in the IAFF, did that expire December nine, twenty nineteen?
Mr. Backen.
Your worship, that's correct. We're on the right track. So the IAFF contract expired December thirty first, two thousand and nineteen. And the QP contract will expire December thirty first, twenty twenty. Now, rather than simply assume they're going to be flatlined, what we've done in the budget is we go through and we try to anticipate what level of increases may be prevalent. So for example, we look to the region and there have been a number of settlements, at least preliminary settlements in a number of locations that give us some guidance in terms of what we're what we're looking at. And the the traditional has always been something like two percent. We're seeing some upward pressure of two and a half percent in some of these areas. So we try to accommodate that going forward in the budget. So we have a a number that is going to be reflective of what's likely to happen. Could always be subject to revision, but we're we're trying to build a model that anticipates the known increases and in so doing limits the need for a amended or revised budget later on through the cycle. So so it it's really, I guess, properly called salary and wage anticipated contract settlements, knowing what's going on in the region.
Yeah, thank you. So that anticipated, would that be based on cost of living or inflation? Or is there some kind of a comparator that that is?
Yeah, so the the anticipated is primarily based on what other jurisdictions have done and what we've seen historically. The cost of living is a factor in some of the settlements we're seeing, but we're seeing upward pressure on settlements in the region for both IFF and QP, not decreased pressure because of the regional costs for for Metro Vancouver. The those drivers tend to be, well, higher than perhaps what the actual rate of inflation is, depending upon how one measures the rate of inflation. They would they would argue that the measurement is flawed because of such things as our transportation and housing costs.
So worship, it might be helpful because it'll probably come up throughout the discussion. What what cost of living rate are we using and what inflation rate are we using, if we're using them at all? But we have a reference point that we can sort of.
So your worship, we can we can tackle that. We're always cautious in terms of saying what we plan to put forth as our negotiation process. However, we can say that in both cases, there have been previous settlements in other jurisdictions in the two point five percent range.
But putting that aside, the the historic part, what is what is the current COL and inflation rate in in our region? That would be helpful to have if we could have that.
So I think the question for for Sandra and Sam is if we can bring back then what the current consumer price index rate has been for for Metro Vancouver.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on.
So moving into the regional costs, we'll deal with the RCMP contract. So there was a general increase in the RCMP contract from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. And after we remove the annualization of the ten members, which we'll discuss later, and before any request for new officers, for which we have three in discretionary this year, we have a contract increase of five hundred and thirty nine thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars. The largest components of that are salaries and indirect costs. So making up that five hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars are two hundred and ninety six thousand, one hundred and ninety seven dollars in salaries for RCMP and the indirect costs are in the pensions aren't included in that salary. So indirect costs include the pensions. So eighty eight thousand, six hundred and seventy two dollars is an increase in the pension costs and the remaining hundred and fifty four thousand dollars is administration of the E division.
Okay, I have a question for Counsel Ferguson.
Okay, a couple of questions. Number one, have we got all ten officers now?
We'll see in the next slide, I think, or there I think we got two slides.
Okay, then the and the other one is I noticing on this thing, I maybe I'm kind of surprised even myself. They have had no contract since January the first, twenty seventeen, three years ago?
Your worship, that's actually correct. The the RCMP have, I guess, notionally formed a bargaining unit. That was formed, obviously, prior to that. That was the the date by which they were recognized. So going forward, there is a, I guess, employee association is probably a better way of phrasing it that's been structured and they're negotiating with the RCMP for a new rate class across the the RCMP structure. Those discussions are continuing and it's very complex. And that's why three years now, they still haven't finalized it, but they continue to work away on it.
Now, just a supplemental that they formed a union would have been twenty nineteen?
No, it was I think I think we're better to call it an employees' association. It may very well be a union under federal law, but they're trying to distinguish themselves as being something different. And it goes back to previous to January of seventeen. It's been around for a number of years. And it's just now in the process of being operationalized. They've been working with the RCMP management for a long period of time now, but it's in part the growing pains for the employees' association and in part the the negotiation process.
Okay, I'm sure this will be coming up again as the years go by. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a question from Ms. Ruff. Do we anticipate, I know not in twenty twenty one, because it's already been set, but are the E division administration to increase if Surrey is successful in completing their police department, will our our costs increase? And has that been discussed? And is that something we should be aware of for future years?
So thank you, your worship, just to help Sandra out because she's she's just coming into this. Wendy and myself have been working on some of these issues in terms of the RCMP and the the overall impact. I guess there's likely to be two impacts. If or when Surrey actually goes to municipal force, a number of the members will likely be encouraged to join Surrey, but a number will will not. That will allow a certain pool of members that would otherwise not be available to be relocated. And that will affect or could affect us positively on our effective complement going forward. We'll cover that in the next slide, the next couple of slides. As to the E division costs, while E division has indicated they would do their very best to to mitigate those costs, I think we anticipate that there likely will be an increase in those head office costs. And the the simple reason is if you have you know, a certain number in in place for your overhead costs, you know, call it a million dollars and you're sharing that amongst ten parties, and then all of a sudden you're sharing it amongst nine parties. Simple arithmetic say your your costs are going to rise a little bit, even if you do have cost mitigation going on in that reduction. So while we're good for twenty twenty one, I think you're correct in assuming that we may see some modest escalation in those future years.
Thank you. Counsel Kuntz.
Yeah, could you define? So E division administration is the largest component of indirect costs at twenty seven thousand plus per member. What kind of administration would you?
That would be the support. I believe there'd be some training and and it's it's all this, it's all the head office support that that's provided to the the local detachment and but I'm not sure the breakdown on.
Is that per year or is that just?
It's annual.
Okay.
That's your worship. That it's you're quite correct. It's per year. And while we know the direct costs of the members and their equipment, say stationed in the lengthy detachment to administer the contract, E division has, well, human resources departments and finance departments and and sometimes some investigative departments. And I gotta be careful there because I'm not talking about the teams. I'm talking about internal reviews and audits that go along with those that they they bill out to us. So just like in our utilities, we we bill not only for the direct cost, but a certain percentage of the overhead, they're doing the same thing. And that number reflects the 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 numbers that we're seeing as part of their, what they call their overhead costs.
And does that number change year to year? Like, or do do they have a budget for what they can sort of? You know, like, like, we're, yeah, never mind.
Yeah, no, the it does tend to change. I would say it tends to to increase, not because of any management changes, but because they too are getting better at tracking their their direct and indirect costs associated with it. Across the country, they're looking at trying to make sure that the user pay philosophy is adopted. So it it does tend to rise over time, but it's done in a in a collaborative way historically. They they tend to actually be very good about publishing updates and justification for it by way of their their background financial data that that we've been able to look at and and to assess. And there's actually regional meetings on the topic as well that are in place to to look at them, not just from the individual municipal perspective, but from the collective regional perspective as well.
Yeah, because that number really adds up for a million, 200 and somewhat. Okay, thank you.
We'll carry on, thank you.
So I've flipped to the other slide, which is the average cost per, um, RCMP member, um, by the different elements, which may help to address some of the other costs issue. Um, so there's some ups and downs in this, uh, salaries obviously went up, but there are in some of the smaller categories, there have been some ups and downs. So the average for this year is 176,867 per member. And that's a 1% increase over last year of 175,488 per member. So this, what was, um, asked earlier on what our strength is. So in orange is our, um, requested strength, authorized strength. So we're at 154.65, which was the 10-member increase. And then down below in orange is our average actual strength. So we're at 132.96. Um, just to be clear, those 10 that were added in this year were requested for October 1st, so only for a portion of the year.
Councilor Ferguson.
I don't know if you would call this a big flag, the RCMP. I mean, this is our budget, the township of Langley, that, that we're going through. We go through it every year. Um, but I think, call it whatever, I think whatever happens in Surrey, and it sounds like they're going through the process, the RCMP are leaving. Uh, I would just wonder where, uh, E-division, that building in E-division, which I followed it during construction, it's a huge building. And obviously a lot of Surrey officers are housed there. Would they rent space off E-division or would they build their own facility? Because everything that happens regarding the, the, a huge, uh, hit in RCMP, uh, both members, uh, funding, everything else, that would impact, uh, you know, throughout all the region regarding RCMP, mostly south of the Fraser. It, it, Mr. Backen or anybody have a comment regarding that?
Green, Green Timbers is, um, is the head office, the RCMP detachment for Surrey is, is a separate building. It's a separate facility, that's same as ours, no different than what Langley has, it's a separate detachment, so the.
Yeah, well, I understand that. Would they leave that Green Timber? I know when there was, it's a big, huge building, uh, would they leave or would they rent space off us?
I don't believe they'd be part of it, they'd have their own, Mr. Backen, I think they have their own.
Your worship, preliminary discussions are, are indicating that the RCMP intend to retain, uh, E-division located in Surrey. It's very central for a number of their detachments, Bernaby, um, the township and, and others. So, uh, they, um, they're anticipating remaining. As the mayor referenced, um, actual police operations, perhaps except for some integrated teams, are not handled through that building. They're actually handled through the, um, uh, the detachment in Surrey, which is located, uh, near the old, uh, Surrey, uh, city hall, as I recall. The old one, not the new one. Uh, and, uh, as a consequence, the, uh, the impact is, is a bit, uh, uncertain as to the number of officers that will be retained by the RCMP versus joining the Surrey Police Force itself. So all of that leads us to the question in terms of the actual modeling, we'll likely see little changes in the E-division structure. The, the teams, except of course, potentially for the loss of a, of a participant, in some cases yes, in some cases no. Uh, and that'll all be reflected in, in future costs. Uh, but I think the infrastructure itself will remain there and the policing operations for Surrey itself will be separated, uh, from the E-division themselves.
Anyway, this will be discussion obviously for the future. Thank you.
Good, Ms. Ruff.
So we'll just touch briefly on this because this is the Fraser Valley Regional Library costs that we're including in the budget, but they are separated out on a separate, as a separate levy. Uh, so the total is, uh, they were voting on their, uh, budget last week, so this has not been updated. These were the options. The intended option was 4.571 million plus the 25,700 at the bottom for a total of 4.597 million.
Uh, Councilor Ferguson, question.
Apologize for this question, I am to super apologize. Is Abbotsford no longer in the Fraser Valley Regional Library system?
They are, they, um, there's two pages to this and this, they don't fit on one slide. So yes, they are in the, uh, system as well. And their costs, they're quite similar in size to us and from a same cost base, similar cost base.
Thank you.
And then we have, um, a slide that breaks out the salaries and wages by division. So the first line is, uh, contract increases. Second line is steps and increments and other adjustments. So there are a couple that have negatives in here, but mostly they're increases. Then we have a increase in the benefits. And so this was sort of a catch-up for extended health, dental and life. And this is the second of two years that we're bringing these, uh, benefit increases. And then they will roll into the normal salary lines. And then we have other, which is additional staffing hours required to maintain programs. So for a total overall of a 1.78% of our, of, uh, property tax impact.
Thank you.
Then we come to the operating impact of township capital. So there's, uh, this is quite a bit larger than the one we saw in the user pay. And, um, these are all for projects which are in progress or finishing up. So the largest are in parks, uh, where we have a number of large ones of, uh, the Yorcson Park Development, the Latimer Neighborhood Park and the Southwest Yorcson Park, as well as the Public Waste Receptacles at various locations, which is a multi-year program. And then we also have the operating impact of contributed assets, uh, again in full dollars. And the total of this is 465,000. Then similar to the user pay, we look at the infrastructure costs to maintain our assets. So the largest piece of this is our contribution to capital in the various, uh, divisions. So Parks has a approximately 2.1 million dollars in contribution to capital. Transportation has 2.3 million dollars. Stormwater has 1.9. And the general fund, um, which includes, uh, police, fire facilities, recreation and culture and information and corporate admin has 2.6. The majority of that one is in facilities for facility maintenance. Uh, this is a total which is of 8.8 million, which is exactly the same as in the prior year. We have not increased or decreased this at this point in the budget. As well in this area is transfers to reserves and surpluses and debt servicing and general asset maintenance. So then, as alluded to earlier, um, and I think as we saw when we discussed the budget previously, we have not reflected any decrease or increase in costing due to the impact of COVID on recreation. But this is, uh, the estimated impacts. So the opening of ACUCC, WC Blair and Walnut Grove Pool have an impact of about 3.3 million dollars. And then there is an additional revenue reduction and in, with the assumption that we have a overall of 75% reduction in revenue, consistent with what other regions are experiencing for an overall impact of 7 million dollars. Again, these are all approximate and they have not been reflected in the budget's, um, details.
Uh, Councilor Whitmarsh.
Yes, uh, thank you, Worship. Just a question on this again, I know I've asked this before, just getting clarification again. Um, the, the 3.27 million, that is increased costs, which are associated with, um, cleaning, uh, maybe additional staff, um, other aspects to opening a facility, um, and keeping them open the way that we discussed at the council table. So 3.2 million for increased costs. But this is also suggesting that in addition to 3.2 million in cost, that there's a 3.7 million dollar loss in revenue at the same time. And, uh, and so I guess I'm, I'm still struggling, um, and maybe it's helpful and just to get some comment. But I'm still struggling with what, how we get 3.27 million in increased cost. I recognize there's some cleaning and some of those kinds of things, but that's 3.2 million seems a lot to increase for cost. I certainly understand the loss of revenue, that one's very clear to me. And maybe just a comment from, um, you know, from staff, I'm not sure who's best to comment on that. But 7 million dollar, uh, adjustment seems, you know, very high. And mostly the 3.2 million in cost seems really high to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Worship. We'll put Mr. Stare on deck because of course this relates to his previous reports on the topic. But the, and then we appreciate Counselor, um, uh, Whitmarsh's, uh, comments in terms of the revenue, but, but you're very close. It breaks down into the two components, whereas before, uh, we may have had, uh, this is an illustration, four lifeguards, uh, on deck for a hundred patrons. Um, now we're seeing that, uh, we're going to have to actually have some, uh, additional cleaning, additional coordinating, additional, uh, parties. So let's, let's say that that adds another one or one and a half positions needed as you work it through the operations of the facility. Uh, and then when you combine that with the fact that that number of personnel were, were necessary for one person or a hundred people, uh, when we see our revenue decrease by 75%, it then comes to the second category, which is the actual overall reduction. So it creates a double whammy in that you have to increase your operating expenses and reduce your revenue. And that leads to the overall impact as referenced. Now, Mr. Stare, you've had some, some more experience with this in terms of the reports you've written. Can you elaborate all in terms of the additional costs that we're actually anticipating with the, this new, the reality, the new environment?
Uh, yes, I can comment on that. Yes, the, the 3.3 million dollars, um, is, is a combination of the revenue generated and, and the additional cost, um, to be open. And it's due to the limited quantities of people it can be in, um, combined with additional cleaning. And then, um, as referenced by Mr. Backen, it's just the additional costs of, of having staff. And the ratios are much, much different than normal operating. So when you start to factor in other areas, um, the revenue, um, you know, is pretty significant. I think, uh, the overall impact of 7 million, typically we generate about 10 million dollars in revenue. And, uh, and, and that's, uh, reflected here in about, looks like about a, well, it's about a 75% reduction uh, from that is, is the 7 million. So it's not quite 10 million, but it's, um, it's, it's that additional cost combined with the capacity limitations. So that could change sometime in 2021, obviously, uh, with, with the vaccine. So, um, we're just not necessarily sure when that's going to happen.
Worship, it might be wise as well to recirculate the previous reports. We can, uh, recirculate those because it gives a bit more of a detailed breakdown and it's easier to, to pull those apart than trying to summarize them kind of on the fly. But it's a very good, very good and appropriate question, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Conest.
Uh, um, on this slide, um, and I know this would be for 2020, but did we realize any savings? And, and where would, where would we see those savings because we weren't open for so many months?
Uh, your worship, um, that would actually be reflected in the 2020, uh, actual numbers still forthcoming. As you may recall, um, in the March or April, when we embarked upon the process, we determined that we were looking at, uh, over eight months of potential differential in revenue and expenses of, on average, uh, a million dollars a month or on average 8 million dollars. So by actually limiting our, our labor costs and, and, uh, and, uh, altering the facilities into more of a, a, a maintenance mode, just in terms of, uh, standing by, we made up most of that money. Uh, we have not yet reached our final year-end numbers. We have seen projections suggesting anywhere from, uh, the fact we may, uh, you know, come in a hundred thousand dollars better than that and that we're positive, or we've also seen some projections that we may be worse by about 200,000 dollars. Our estimations for this budget were that we would break even or that we'd be within a range that we could, uh, cover any gap that exists by way of, uh, our accumulated surplus that we actually had. And so far we seem to be pretty good on, uh, on meeting that objective. So in terms of 2021, uh, you won't see any number because we've effectively broken even. But in 2020, in the year-end financials, you'll actually see the, uh, reduction in the, uh, the revenues, uh, and the impact they had.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Anderson.
Uh, yes, thank you, Worship. And, um, through your worship, maybe to Mr. Stare and possibly Mr. Backen. So it's sort of in line with the inquiries, I think, that are being generated about the, the income and potential deficit. And I know it would be challenging because I think that overall my perception is we take quite a conservative view of how, uh, things are going and how we can fare financially in different disciplines and departments. However, I'm wondering whether or not we have any preliminary projections regarding what our landscape would look like with increased incremental usage in the new year. So it's kind of a, a way to, uh, project what that potential could look like. I think for myself, that would be helpful to know. Uh, we've got a snapshot of what it looks like now, but, you know, just having a preliminary assessment of what that could be in the new year would be helpful.
Your worship, and that's something we can, uh, deliver on an ongoing basis because I think the counselors hit the, uh, the nail on the head with the challenge. In 2020, we've had to revise, continually revise and reassess because of the changing, uh, landscape that we've seen, uh, including potential opening dates and availability of, uh, of staff and availability of, uh, I guess, opening to the public because of the public health concerns. So, uh, as we roll into 2021, we have two dimensions that we're, we're actively looking at. The, uh, the first dimension is the, the length of time before things normalize. Is it going to be, uh, one quarter of a year, one half of a year, three quarters of a year? When will things begin to get to a level that are, are, are traditional? And the second part though is, um, trying to estimate the timing of that. Uh, we don't anticipate this, simply flipping a switch and being able to say by, uh, July the first halfway through the year, we're going to go from, uh, zero revenue to a hundred percent revenue or whatever that may be. There has to be some ability to graduate, uh, the numbers as they come back through, uh, like any business, uh, uh, airlines, for example, they're not anticipating that when there is a fully implemented vaccine, their numbers will return immediately. It will take some period of time. And what we're seeing from other communities is similar budgeting processes in terms of the impact and the expenses. Everyone is unique, there's no doubt that they are all, uh, quite different, but we're seeing general trends developing. And we've developed these numbers in association with those trends. And in answer to the question, then we certainly, uh, will be providing updates as we go forward that will hopefully show a, a better budget position, uh, than we were anticipating. But, uh, uh, that's the, the need for the crystal ball.
And, and just a quick supplemental question to that then, is the degree to which we've had extraordinary costs with the extra cleaning, the degree to which that would be, uh, decelerating, shall we say, with, um, the implementation potentially of an, of a vaccine rollout? Would, would that be a reasonable assumption?
That, that's correct. It would impact the overall numbers if we, uh, could immediately, again, using my hypothetical, with July the first, return to a, a normalcy, uh, that we had before, where we have, uh, no additional cleaning costs, those would fall away. Uh, that would be, um, easily to, easy to predict. There's two dimensions to it though, that we're also tracking, and that is number one, well, what is the transition period? What will it look like? Uh, you know, uh, not all of the population may choose to, uh, opt for vaccination and what is that due to the cleaning requirements? And the second one then becomes something, again, that the airlines are experiencing. There's a new, a new normal in terms of what we think is going to be out there, even for, um, non-COVID type illnesses. We're seeing the ability of, uh, some diseases or infections to transmit openly among the population. Will there be a higher need from the population to have greater protection from those things? And will this enhanced cleaning become the new norm or some variation thereof? So, uh, quite right that, uh, those are two variables we have to try to factor into going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Whitmarsh.
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, that's, I had it, okay, great, well, we'll move on then, thank you.
Sandra, if you're speaking, you are muted.
Wow, you missed it all.
Okay, we'll move on to the next slide. Just kidding.
So summary of budget, uh, changes, uh, so.
So summary of budget uh changes. Uh so these are the nondiscretionary budget requests for the current year. So salaries and wages, we had discussed previously with a one point seven eight percent impact. Then we have salary and wage uh annualizations, which are roll forward of positions that were included in the twenty twenty budget for a part partial year, and now this is annualizing those. As well, we have the RCMP annualization of the ten officers, which were requested for October first, twenty twenty. And the offsetting transfer from uh the RCMP reserve to stabilize the implementation of additional officers. From a cost perspective on the budget. We had an increase in the contract, uh the RCMP contract um of uh five hundred and forty thousand. And then the operating impact, as previously discussed, on township capital of six hundred and seventy six thousand and of development of four hundred and sixty four thousand. For a point eight two percent impact on the um budget. There is a provision for a new uh community policing office in North Langley, um the lease of that facility. We have service contract increases in various areas for one point uh two seven million or point nine one. In the current year, we're experiencing um a difficult insurance uh marketplace, so we're seeing some significant cost pressures in that area. And have included two hundred and forty thousand dollars for additional expense. We have a number of miscellaneous um large and small adjustments uh for six hundred and seventy thousand. A more impactful item is the reduction in the investment revenue. So this year, we are seeing obviously decreases in the returns on investments, and we've also. Been using our reserves for various items, so we're also having a decrease in the amount of money in those accounts. Then we have two items that uh relate to uh picking up the shortfall from previous years. So from twenty eighteen, we had a growth shortfall in property taxes. And also from twenty twenty, we had a small shortfall in growth from property taxes. Uh we did have some decrease in our external debt. And then we uh had two items that relate to each other, which was a reduction in electricity and uh costs related to the uh conversion of LED lights. And that is offset by um the street, the uh debt provision for the streetlights uh conversion to LED. Uh in the prior year, we had used our capital infrastructure renewal and replacement um. To um fund debt, and this year we're trying to add back to that um reserve fund uh up to the tune of three hundred thousand. Um we also had a couple of items in the prior year, and one was the use of um. The DCC for payments uh towards the to help reduce the debt costs, and we're slowly reducing that. So this year, we're taking an extra three hundred thousand dollars into the budget. And we also had a one time um what um transfer from Water Capital Reserve. Uh which we are removing from the from the base budget this year for a one point seven million dollar impact. And our growth that we have seen based on BC assessments uh estimates are one point five three. So it nets out to, again, this is nondiscretionary, to six point four eight um and nine million dollars.
Thank you. Uh some questions on the slide. Uh start with Council Ferguson.
Yes, I uh wanted to ask you two quick questions. Uh I'm glad I was able to get my Abbott's for it. I thought for a second I was losing it uh regarding the regional and the insurance market. I know it's a huge challenge out there. Everybody's scrambling to see what will happen, and the two questions are. Uh is there a chance that the provincial government will may look into being a a carrier of their own for certain things? Uh and is there any chance, and I guess this has come up many times in the past, but it's about us doing our own um being our own uh. Carrier for certain uh things regarding uh liability and everything. That's just the first two question. Then the next one is the debt servicing reduction. Is that due to interest um? Ri- uh lower interest rates or is it something else? Those are two questions. Thank you.
So your worship, I'll all start off and then Sandra can chime in as as uh necessary to help me. Uh as to the provincial government, there has been some talk of uh, I guess, putting in some uh parameters for some of the increases or. Removing certain elements of it, at least in terms of some of the uh the retail insurance for strategy units and condominiums. Uh will that actually come over to us? Uh the public sector, hard to say. We don't sense there's any um intent to try to enter the insurance industry, and in fact, I think they're trying to more or less exit and regulate it. So uh. Uh anything is possible, but it's not something we're seeing on our radar. Uh the second topic, then, um I I guess would be in terms of the uh the overall impact of the uh the budget itself. Um. The the growth standard, do you wanna chime in now on those second and third questions?
So for the interest, some of the external debt reduction is um due to estimates that we made last year that now, when we firmed up, we came in at a lower interest rate.
Okay, back to the second part of my thank you for the debt servicing. Um do we carry, if Mr. Backen or yourself, is the fact? Do we carry any liability ourselves and not deal with uh insurance companies um through the process? I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure if there's some things we carry ourselves.
Oh, thank you. The. We are still yeah using the private insurance industry or the private market for most of our insurance needs. Uh we uh have looked at other opportunities uh in terms of the MIA and whatnot, and uh. Uh our driving factor has simply been trying to achieve the least cost. Uh is that advances, you're referencing what some municipalities have done, which is effectively a captive insurance company, or that's where they form their own entity. That ensures uh what they would usually do is they would have they were, they would pay a premium to themselves uh to build up their reserves, and they would secure the reserves necessary for any. Calamity by their existing cash flow and reserves uh uh to to basically self insure. Uh it's it's a bit more complicated than that, but they uh. They basically pay the premiums to themselves, which are significant, and they self insure and. Uh use their 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 uh reserve funds as a way of funding that in case of calamity. So. That's something that we're not looking at at the present time, uh only because it's a significant departure. Uh both in terms of the potential cost to set it up and as well the potential. Experience in terms of your actuarial rates for the various types of calamities that may occur. So. It's something we continue to be aware of and cognizant of, but uh uh aren't quite at that threshold yet.
Thank you.
Uh council Woodward.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I had a question through the staff on uh the CPO North Langley facility lease, so I can infer from the word lease that that's rent for a new facility. Would that be correct?
I believe so, Sandra. That I think represents our our estimate, or is that a known number now in terms of what the uh? The lease rates are for the uh North Langley CPO.
I believe it's an estimate.
Yeah, cuz that was gonna be my next question. Um so is that an annualized number for a portion of twenty twenty one, or is that a, is that a, so they would go up again in? The twenty twenty two budget, or do we, do we, what months are you including for that two twenty six? And what would be the estimated twenty twenty two number?
Uh Peter, I think you probably had some experience with this. Do you have any uh guidance in terms of what the numbers are looking like? I don't believe we finalized it yet, but you might be able to give us some ballpark numbers.
Yes, I believe it would be the same. The only difference would be any increase to, oh, sorry. Uh any increases to the CAM fee would be uh changing per year, but that that's a fixed rate for, I think, a period of ten years.
Okay, so I just wanna clarify then, because the the new CPO is not open yet, right?
Uh that's correct. I think what Peter is saying, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, is this represents effectively the estimated base rent number, but the common area costs uh. So CAM costs are not yet built into this number. Is that correct?
No, I believe that number is with the the initial estimate of CAM coming in. Uh at about uh twelve dollars per square foot, somewhere around there. I don't have the papers in front of me. But so we can't believe it would include that, but what I was saying was that the. Increase would only be to the CAM in the second or third year.
Okay, yeah, maybe be trying to help. So what I was trying to get to, if if the facility is not open. Then we're not paying this rent in twenty twenty one. We would. This would be for some portion of twenty twenty one based on an opening date, so then it would be a higher number for twenty twenty two, once it's fully open for a full twelve month period. So the twenty, the two twenty six number, I'm trying to see whether maybe it can be brought down if it's a full annual number, but I would assume. That that two twenty six would be for a portion of twenty twenty one, since it's not open yet.
I would have to refer that to Sandra as to what portion she they used with respect to that number. Sorry.
We'll have to get back, I think, to that.
Okay, can I ask just a couple? Where is it located?
That that would be uh across from the uh um the uh. Uh transit exchange up in North Langley, so directly adjacent to the transit exchange.
Okay, that's good. So would this be in addition to the Walnut Grove location or replacing the Walnut Grove location?
We would be replacing the Walnut Grove location.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Uh council Whitmarsh.
Uh yes, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Um. The uh on the LED uh street light conversion, um I think that when council approve this, my understanding was that we would see a. Uh you know, benefit over the long term, uh financial benefit over the long term, uh in addition to the safety. And brighter lights and so on, but this this shows here that we actually are experiencing immediate returns of approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Immediately. Am I, am I reading that correct, that we are seeing a hundred thousand dollar gain immediately, even in year one?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's that's uh that's awesome.
Some of that, there was a reduction, I believe, in the interest rate that we had anticipated as well, which helped towards that.
Right, okay. Well, that's all good. Um the other question I had was um on the property tax revenue from growth estimated at one point five three percent. Um what, can you tell me what the uh previous couple of years were? Do we, do you have that uh sort of available and what that percentage is? I. I thought it way we were closer to the two percent or more in previous years, and I'm wondering if how that one point five three compares to say the last two or three years.
So in twenty nineteen, we budgeted one point seven five percent, and I think we're pretty close to that. In twenty twenty, we budgeted two point one five percent, and we came in slightly under that. I believe it was more around two point oh six.
Okay, so this is um i- is it, do we, do we make, where does this estimate come from, the one point five three? Does that come from us estimating it based on our previous years, or is this? Come from some other source?
This is from BC Assessment.
Okay, so they're anticipating a bit less growth than what we might have had in the previous couple of years. Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Uh consequently.
Yeah, um could you remind me um of the eliminate twenty eighteen growth shortfall in property taxes? Why we're we're still seeing that in twenty twenty one? So twenty eighteen, I mean.
We had a shortfall in our property taxes in twenty eighteen, and we haven't um brought that shortfall into our budgeting process to this point. So at some point, we have to bring that in, um and I think we've been deferring it, so we brought that in this year.
Okay, so we didn't, we didn't look at this last year or the year before, clearly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more questions moving forward. Thanks.
And we will move on to the discretionary requests this year, which um we've tried to keep relatively minimal. So road paving is a program that we have in place, and we're trying to build that program up, so the request is for another five hundred thousand. There's a request for a di- um development engineering technology technologist. For reviewing development applications. And then and with regards to the tree protection bylaw, we have a request for an arborist and a support clerk. And then a digital media specialist. And then included in uh the discretionary are also three additional RCMP officers starting in October of twenty twenty one. And and a related offset from the transfer for RCMP reserve to smooth out those uh increases.
Okay, thank you. Uh council Ferguson.
Uh that's be, okay, I wanted to ask you, um on some of our staff, um development engineering technologists, uh. Usually that's paid through for either through the existing uh revenues from that department. Is that still still the case or not the case now?
Mr. Backen.
Uh thank you, worship. The the attempt is usually for some of these uh these services is to have them to be recovered by the divisional level. Uh when that occurs, what we see is an increase in revenues, then an associated increase in expenses. What you're looking at here is the associated increase in the the expense side. Um now ordinarily, the revenue would offset that, but I think we're being a bit cautious, given the the revenue level you've seen in some of the previous slides where. Um even excluding uh the uh the impact on recreation culture and parks. Other revenues are a bit more, I guess, uh volatile and uh and uh we're just uh being a bit cautious. So the principle remains the same. Implementation may be a bit different depending upon the overall economic circumstances.
Okay, so just one, just a little supplemental to that. Uh is this, is there an opportunity at all to recover some of the costs for this development engineering technologies? Uh given the fact we have fees, charges and everything else in that department?
Right, that's correct, and we've effectively taken that into account into our into our numbers. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that we. We're looking for better numbers on the uh the revenue side. Uh that would offset these in in this column, if you will, but it's something that we just uh we can't uh definitively predict at this point.
Now, okay, so while I got me got you there, I mean, what about the RCMP officers? We had ten last year. Uh can we hold off or we can we look at one or two or maximum three? I'm not sure what the city is doing. Uh. Uh those are all um questions that uh, you know, we have to address, I guess, flag for uh next meeting.
Yep, I'll flag this for next meeting. Mr. Backen, do you have any comments?
No, that's correct, your worship. The request has not yet been submitted, so council has a multitude of options uh with this uh reducing, deferring uh. Uh delaying whatever whatever may be appropriate, given council's overall policy considerations.
Okay, thank you. Council on. Sir Long, you're muted if you're speaking.
Oh, thanks. Uh yeah, so I didn't wanna ask this originally, but now that's sparked a a question. It's already says here that there were there were deferring offices until October. Uh twenty twenty one, the decision to add offices have already been made, so are are we going to go back and, you know, this happened a little. Couple of meetings ago and and sort of start revisiting all the decisions again? I I I would hope not.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, I mean, there's that, this is um, the budget process has always had opportunities, so I guess they haven't been. The order has been put in place, um but.
Bought it them already, cuz wasn't that decided last year?
There were ten last year that have already been put in place. This is the three, this would be a, this is a new request on top of the ten, moving forward.
All right, so, okay, no. Okay, but my question originally was about similar to the technologist, um the tree protection bylaw officers, I guess. Uh and clerks, uh it there must be some, is a cost recovery in that program, or did we not structure the program that it would self fund itself to some extent?
Mr. Backen.
Um your worship, this is in reference to the um report that went forth to council and council authorized it to be included as part of the budget as part of the resolution. Um I believe these numbers would be net of any savings. This is a tree protection is something that's certainly very meritorious, but it's not something that's gonna generate a lot of. Uh revenues and whatnot. So this is a our estimate in terms of uh the cost given council's direction.
Okay, so when we, when we put that bylaw into place, the these are the costs that associated with it. And uh and and the revenue is is nominal, I guess, for the tree permits. Or in what, in fractions perhaps or whatever. Okay.
Correct.
Uh council Arnesson.
Uh yes, thank you, worship. And just briefly further to counselor.
Ah yes, thank you, your worship, and just briefly further to counselor Long's point uh and Mr. Backen's comments. I believe that the task force is very much in a preliminary process. Excuse me, of looking at the bylaw per se, which could include um different fines and different financial. Uh measures in order to recoup some of those costs. But I agree entirely with Mr. Backen, that it is very hard to structure something based on one year in council's. Actually, uh staff feedback about the degree to which it is created. Uh more demand and requiring uh these individuals to be hired. I I wouldn't say projecting forward that this is necessarily something that's going to continue to expand. Uh however, I do believe that potentially. In what Council Long is saying, that since we have a bylaw. I think with any kind of measure along those lines, there will be additional costs, and that's something. Council needs to consider and weigh in balance, but I think since we're already in process. And we've had the feedback that we've had, we should, you know, just uh carry this forward, because it is something that's. Apparently having a negative impact on other areas of tree management and parks. And green infrastructure, so those are just additional comments. Thank you.
Move on to the next slide.
And so this is just to sum up what we've been discussing today. Um the non-discretionary base budget changes are a total of nine million. Uh six point four eight percent impact. Discretionary requests are nine hundred and twenty one thousand point six six potential impact. The recreation center COVID increases for opening are two point three five percent, uh three point three million. And revenue reductions from recreation centers are coming in at two point six eight percent, three point seven million. And then we also have not taken into account in this budget, the restart one-time grant from the provincial federal government for seven point six million. Which is a in infusion of cash of five point four seven percent.
Thank you. This all adds up to.
Worship, I think it's by recollection, it's about six point seven, as I recall. And uh and just a word of caution, that is not a reference or inference or suggestion, that's where we're going to end up. This is simply what the model is now showing. Uh as we're going to see in a subsequent slide, now we have to kind of drill down and look at some areas where we can. Effectively reduce some of the need for revenue increases, so where can we actually uh. Uh reduce some of these numbers, where can we actually bridge some of these numbers, where can we actually look at new revenue sources, so. Just a word of caution that this is a part of the process and gives you the the. Expense side, but we still have to look at some of the opportunity side of this uh this equation, that's uh probably going to come in our meeting in January.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next slide then, thank you.
So this is similar to what we had in user pay is our one times, and we are showing those that are greater than fifty thousand dollars. So this is always contingent upon there being enough uh prior year surplus funding for the prior year surplus numbers. To be spent, so a couple of items in here that are somewhat unusual are the parks COVID safety. As well as enhanced cleaning due to COVID, so there's a hundred thousand dollars in parks and three hundred thousand dollars um for libraries and general building.
Okay, uh so. Just a little more explanation on this, so uh basically, these are one times that. Um would, if they come from prior year surplus, would would this reduce what we saw on the previous slide, or is this? Doesn't affect that at all, it's just comes out of private service, so this this has no effect on on the on the previous slide, okay, great, thanks. I'm seeing Mr. Backen nodding his head in affirmation, which nobody else can see, so I I I take it that was the answer, thank you. Okay, Council Whitmarsh.
Uh yes, your worship, just a question on the enhanced cleaning, is this? The additional cost uh for cleaning of all township facilities outside of recreation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so now we'll move on to the next slide, and it's um it's a resolute proposed resolution for council. And uh this would be to receive and refer the twenty twenty one universal services operating budget to a future special budget meeting. Counsel the purpose of further consideration discussion approval as received amended, and I would think that that would be the January eleventh meeting, is that correct, Mr. Backen? Yeah, so we could just add in the January eleventh uh meeting council or special meeting, so if someone would like to move that.
Move Whitmarsh.
Council Whitmarsh moves it secondar. Uh was that Council on?
Long, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh discussion, all those in favor? And opposed? Hearing none, it's curious unanimously. And uh the next slide is the budget timeline, which we've seen already, so this um. Shows that on January eleventh, we'll have some more discussions, and this is a really a great presentation to get an introduction to the um. Universal services and the uh operating budget, uh certainly uh more work to be done, but uh. I'll leave, I'll turn it over to uh Ms. Ruff and Mr. Backen to conclude.
Uh thank you, your worship, a bit more work to do today, so um next in your package, I'm not sure of the page number, you'll see Sandra's uh. Uh memo that references the items uh for which further information was requested at the November thirtieth meeting.
Okay.
Uh because we have only about twenty more minutes in today, uh we leave that there for discussion and uh. Lead a lot of uh further questions arise, we're happy to deal with those, but you have some background material that. That addresses some of the questions that were previously referenced, such as the uh. Uh the cost increases and drivers from our twenty twenty model, from our 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 five-year debt, or. Our two twelve connector cost, our Fraser River Presentation Theater improvements, a request for the cycling map and uh. As well, uh specifically something to some widening that was going on, so that's that's there for reference materials primarily and. Uh again, we can uh deal with that as as uh we need to with the further questions or what that may may look like. Uh next uh up on the list of materials, again for council's information, and I believe that is actually in a bit of a separate binder. Is our list of our our carryforwards, again, it was a request, uh and just to to highlight them, um this is what's uh. Been previously approved by council uh um in accordance with priorities, and to be fair, it may have been this council or a previous council. Some of these are multi-year projects, and it's there as a reference source as well to go through and to. Uh explore and get further updates on them as need be and uh and uh like understand them and uh. In some cases, and we have to be cautious, uh in some cases revisit the priority, and I say in some cases because it's very hard to. To revisit a priority for a project that's nearly done, but we we leave that for council's considerations as well. Which then would uh take us up to the um. Um uh the next point of it, which was going to be the options and next steps, which will be the subsequent discussion of a subsequent slide. Uh but that would be a probably a wise way to spend our twenty minutes and just having a dialogue. As to the options to kind of bring our revenue needs down. Uh and uh and to get some feedback in terms of areas uh preferably that simply uh aren't prudent to to actually to look, so uh. So uh again, we're we're, we can talk about some of those in more detail, but uh was the. This was the slide, the the budget options uh that we can talk about, but we first, I think I see a hand up, so it would be. Back to your worship for questions before we start discussing the budget options.
Thank you, uh Council Ferguson.
Okay, I got um I lo- I got uh some technical difficulties. Okay, so for the vote, for the vote with the res- the resolution for uh to go back and uh. To send it back to uh refer the twenty twenty one universal services to a future, was that the vote?
Yeah, to to January eleventh, yeah, so we're just carrying on the discussion.
Okay, that's the jan- uh because I I totally missed that vote, and so now we're into the next part, okay, thank you.
That's right, thanks, okay, thank you. So so Mr. Backen, uh certainly we can have discussion, I think levies, um we've seen, we're seeing that in in in. Other municipalities where they're coming out with a a tax rate which is substantially lower than what we're anticipating or looking at, I mean. Lot of work to be done, but they're they're um cushioning it with uh with levies for some of the items that we are including in our in our. Tax uh percentage increase, maybe Mr. Backen can give us a bit more, uh flush that out in a little bit of, you know, background on that.
Uh thank you, your worship, and it's a a good place to make perhaps begin, because we're getting um uh some good feedback that this may not be something that uh. That we want to be looking at at this time, and uh just by way of a bit of a background, what we're seeing, and it's been referred to as a Suri model. Where I think Suri's announced uh the order of a three and a three and a half percent tax increase. But they're taking their infrastructure levy uh from one hundred dollars to three hundred dollars, uh so. Uh one can do the math in terms of what that represents as an increase of the levy. The purpose of the levy is to dedicate and to transparently show. Where the tax revenue is going uh to, or the levy revenue is going to, and it's going to a a list of specified projects or purposes. Um that are are directly related to infrastructure, whether it be facilities, or whether it be roads, or what whatever it may actually be. Um that is a a positive move uh in some ways, uh in terms of you can actually allocate money for it. Uh in our world, the township world, uh we partially achieve that, but we have our contribution to capital. We take our general revenue, and we take a portion of it, and we uh we contribute that to our capital reserves, and as Sandra mentioned. We're taking the same proportion as we did last year, which is about eight point eight million dollars, at least in our in our draft model. Uh by way of reference, um every uh hundred dollars of a levy raises about two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh I think was the number, um in terms of what uh, sorry. Every hundred dollars of levy raises about two point five million dollars, as I recall, in terms of what's out there. Uh Sam, have I got that correct, or have I got my numbers inverted again? You were briefing me on this this morning. Sam, you're muted?
Hi, thank you. Um the hundred dollar levy will bring us about four point six million.
Four point six, so I stand corrected, I had my my older numbers, so. A hundred dollar levy for the township, uh if we went down that, would lever about four point six million dollars, so you can see the numbers become significant quickly. Uh now, there's there's a couple of negatives to the levy system, however, um so first of all. Uh as I referenced before, we have our contribution to capital. Uh in times such as this, we can defer our contributions to capital and use that for our overall operating. Giving the council more flexibility. In a levy system, you have some challenges in that the money is there for infrastructure purposes only. You can raise or decrease your levy, but it's gone uh to use for those specified purposes. The second challenge is the levy is actually indiscriminate as to the parcels or the folios. Uh as Sam mentioned, we have uh, if we have about forty thousand to forty five thousand parcels or or folios. Uh that means you multiply that number by the number, a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars, and you determine your your revenue. The interesting part about that is, that applies to every folio regardless of its size, so in theory, it could be a. Uh a hundred acre parcel or a or a parcel that has a very high assessment versus a uh condominium that has a relatively. A low assessment, the the levy affects them all equally, so it's it's an area that is uh. Challenging because there's the equity issue, uh the the counterargument, of course, would be, well, every every property folio has the same benefit of the potential services, so. Or potential infrastructure use, so as a consequence, it's warranted. It's a very big topic, uh it has lots of pros and cons, uh but in our conversations with some members of council. This may not be the year to undertake this, and of course, even hearing that is is a positive sign. Because it means that we don't need to spend a lot of time and resources uh going down a path that just doesn't work for us at this time, so. Uh in a in a nutshell, that's an encapsulation of the levy uh argument, your worship.
Is there is there um uh a vehicle or a way to uh. Adjust the the levy by assessment value, so to address the concern that you have, and I think it's a real concern. Condominium worth, you know, three hundred thousand dollars is going to pay the same as a an estate worth five million dollars, uh although, you know, the. The person in the condominium uses uses, say, the library, for example, for any of these libraries, same as the person in the. The five million dollar, so but we I we certainly can see there's a discrepancy there, is there a, have other municipalities done a um. A way to prorate it or to adjust it based on property or some range?
Uh your worship, the um the property value is is something that B C assessment deals with, and that affects the general tax rate, so that's that's making a hybrid. What we have seen is not so much the um uh the adjustment of the overall rate, but perhaps area-specific levies, uh so. Uh in an area-specific levy, it may be that uh that area has a different uh. Different characterization or different demographic as to the units and people inhabiting them. So you may have, say, a an area that may be lower, and an area that might be higher. Those sorts of models have been experimented with uh in other parts of the country. I I can't say I've seen that done uh locally, uh it's something that could be looked at, but again, it's a. Uh it it adds another level of complexity, because from the uh property tax manager's point of view. Every levy has to go through a notification process, uh uh once you have it in place, you don't need to repeat the notifications, but you have to. Initiate it, notify it, and launch it, and uh that leads to a tremendous issue or tremendous tremendous number of comments as to the equity of it. Again, well, it's done to our east and done to our west, the question is, should it be done here, and what's the timing of it, and is it? Is this the right timing for it, given the COVID environment, so it's just something we wanted to put out there as a as a potential topic, and uh. If we can get some direction to go or not to go, that's always a very helpful to us, because it saves a lot of time.
Thank you, uh Council on.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you're gonna take a vote on it, because some are. For and some are against, and I'm one that's terribly against, but I guess I have some questions to explore some more, so you so you just answered that we couldn't do it on a frontage basis or something like that? Where it would be a bit more equitable in terms of uh the different sized homes, because I mean, as the mayor said, you could have a small apartment and and a mansion, but you're certainly going to have more people in your mansion. And potentially, right, you can have a lot more activity there, probably six or seven more cars and whatever in a in a five million dollar mansion. But so you're saying that 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 the frontage or the assessment is is challenging. Uh but what would that number be? So you gave us a number of a hundred dollars. If you if you if you put that into a percentage, maybe, did you give us that number, is it like point something 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 percent as a levy?
Well, well, I think what we can say is um the. Right now, we're working from the numbers of a a one percent property tax increase, would generate about one point four million dollars, I think, in revenue. So a levy of a a hundred dollars then uh would have an impact multiplied by the number of units, as Sam said, about four, four and a half million dollars, so.
About three percent.
What about seniors, if if this levy were to be considered, what are other communities doing? I mean, if you have, you you get your seniors grant, uh homeowner's grant. Would that be calculated in there with a levy, or do you, does everybody pay the levy?
Um the levy is outside of the the grant, so you would you base your calculation or your taxes based on uh. The number that is generated on the on the tax bill by the mill rate, uh but this is then an additional charge uh that goes on top of that, so it's a. It certainly affects the overall uh parcel or the overall package of taxes you're paying as part of your tax bill. Uh but there's no direct reduction for seniors or for any type of property as we understand.
So that there's my concern, I mean, if you're a low-income senior just getting by, you're paying school taxes already, which is. Somewhat unfair, but that's the way that goes, and maybe it's not unfair, but it it is, it is a reality, and then you get hit with this with this uh. With a with a levy that, so there is no no relief, let's say, to to seniors, so that's a that's a real concern. But I'm interested in your district ones, in other words, what you're saying potentially, and how how? How how much can be managed a district? Could you say it's block by block? Or 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 could it be, could there be one that's for condominiums and one for single-family, one for duplexes, I mean, these are all questions that. That might make it fair, but it's, as you said, Mr. Backen, this is a very complicated uh formula that would have to be worked out, and um. Whereas I've I've got my concerns, certainly, if we're gonna, you know, if if we ever embark on this at some point, which I hope we don't at the moment. You'd have to do an awful lot of research, so I don't know. But going back to that, could you do something, you said district, so that means you could say, well, for example, Willoughby uh would have a certain. Levy, and then perhaps that would help pay for the the Eric Woodwood Library.
Could be class of property, I think.
Uh your worship, just to. Generally, you you don't do them by property type, because then we're reverting back to what property taxes are about, uh. You would instead do it as a levy for a speci- a specified area. And while you can do it for smaller areas, uh the suggestion, I think, would be to do it in conjunction with your. Your official community plan designations, if we were to go down that path, because presumably the plans uh have a certain type of housing mix and a certain type of uh. Of uh servicing level that's inherent to all the units within that, they go, now again, I think the most helpful comments, though, are. Are simply the reluctance to see us go down this path, because uh again, we're happy to, it's just that the amount of time and resources to answer these questions. Are significant if it's not something that's kind of top of mind for council, and the the interesting thing about our our neighbors, of course, is that. While they look at it as being a levy as a separate charge, which does raise revenue, and it does raise other uh uh benefits in terms of transparency as to infrastructure. What it uh what it does do, though, is it it's it's not generally considered part of the overall tax increase, because we're. You're really identifying that the purpose of this is for specific infrastructure, not general taxes, and once we. Begin to actually mix the two, it then becomes a. Not a productive exercise, because then it's simply a matter of reverting back to the uh the general tax rate, which is for. Your traditional maintenance of services as opposed to the construction of your new services, that's by way of what our neighbors are doing.
Thank you. Uh Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I um, you know, I certainly see uh that there could be some. Yeah, I um, you know, I certainly see uh, that there could be some potential real value in the levy system from a transparency point of view. I also think there's some elements of it that actually create more fairness. However, I'm also concerned about many of the points that have been brought up here around the levy. And it seems to me that certainly for this twenty twenty one budget, I think, I just don't think it's an appropriate thing to bring in at, with the timing of it. And, and uh, how short of the timeframe we have, here we are into middle of December. Also with COVID, I think those two things I would probably suggest we don't. But I do think that it would be helpful to start having a conversation of this, maybe after we've done the twenty twenty one budget. That we start having a conversation strictly around the philosophy of the levy system, what that would look like. And maybe make a decision by September, October of whether we want to move forward with the levy system and not have it actually tied directly to the budget. Decision-making, but actually make a decision prior to the budget. So my recommendation is to leave it until we get to uh, April or May. And then start having an actual conversation where we can have good discussion and good input about what are the advantages and disadvantages of levy system.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson.
Uh, thank you, worship. I think sort of councillor Whitmarsh took the words out of my mouth. But I did have um, a couple of other thoughts about that. Because in terms of the levy system, I think the timeliness of trying to come up with the, a plan or a strategy is one thing. I'm looking into the details. I think for us, the benefit is in delay. That we would have an opportunity, for example, to see other communities and how they fared. And there may be best management practice or some kind of principles that come from the application of this. I know, we know a little bit about Suri, but um, we only know more or less in the media what the kind of feedback is. Um, my concern about the application of a levy has always been the degree to which we can ensure, aside from equity issues. About how it affects independent households, the idea that the rural as well as the urban have some sense of parity. That they, I guess we'll call it, the projects that are selected for that are equally representative. Of what would be of value to people live in the rural countryside, as well as the value to people who live in the urban areas. And to try and find that balance, because I just hearken back to the reasons that uh, Langley City historically seceded. From the township, which was all about taxation, really. And so the degree to which you want to hit a sweet spot, I think, to try and find that balance if we decided to go to a levy system. So those are just my comments.
Thank you, worship. Uh, helpful comments in terms of where we focused our efforts. And I was just gonna make another comment, being mindful of the time. Because I think that such things as deferrals and reallocations and reductions in use of reserves and surplus and strategic borrowing. Are all things that we have utilized before and certainly should be, uh, perhaps with the exception of borrowing, if that's a philosophical question. But should be at least looked at. Uh, differential, differential mill rate adjustments are another issue that uh, is a interesting one. In terms of the, both the equity and the timing of it. But the one I thought we could perhaps also just get some direction on. And that maybe either to do it or to remove it as an option, is a further priority session. We have that, that ability. And I don't know if that would help council or if that's just seen as being something that would be um, just superfluous to the process we're undertaking so far. Uh, is that something we should be considering or should we just uh, go away and come back on the eleventh with a package? That uh, perhaps gives us um, uh, some reason to, to review and debate and uh, and then uh, come up with some suggestions. Or uh, doing that in a bit of a vacuum is always a challenge, but we also have this option of the priority sessions. We would defer to you in terms of your, your thoughts, your worship.
Uh, councillor Long.
Mr. Backen's being very polite, but uh, yeah, these priority sessions have, haven't met with, you know, there's been some controversy perhaps. Or some lack of cooperation perhaps on, on many of our sides. But, but it's essential. How, how do you set your spending priorities if you don't, if you don't have them, you know, listed and put on a board and agreed on in some respect? So I know that we've been around many different issues over the, over this term. And I don't know if, if we have a, a, an actual priority list uh, in front of us to look at. I think we each have one. But whether they uh, are the same, uh, and they're shared is another question. So it's um, as much as some of these sessions are a little bit painful and challenging, you gotta have them, don't you? So I, I don't think we should throw it out. I think we should actually make an attempt to put a priority session together and focus strictly on spending. Here are the projects, here's what it's gonna cost, and here's what uh, what is accomplishable in, in this term and in future years.
So following up on that, uh, Mr. Backen, so the eleventh, we're gonna come back, discuss the, the budget. Uh, the eighteenth, if we were to have the uh, uh, council priority session, priority session. That um, would then feed into the, our January eleventh discussions and we'd come back because I see results of public consultations. So at some point, we have to go to the public consultation. So maybe you can just help us with the timeline. Would we be looking at it February the first then to, I think that was the date, to start uh, putting something together for the public? How would that timeline work?
Effectively correct, your worship. The timeline is intended to be flexible and we can try to make it, make it work. And we're in the, in terms of timing, we're in a decent position, I guess, uh, because we're uh, we've had our overall model created. And, and uh, presented uh, in the month of December, as we recall last year, for a whole bunch of reasons, it was a bit of a later start. So we have, we have a few more options. Uh, the, the timing, the dates I'm going, were, they're from memory. I have to defer to Ms. Bauer on those dates as being Mr. McIntosh's available dates, but I believe they were correct, subject to being updated. And assuming they are correct, that will then take us terms, so January the eleventh, we could provide a bit of a, an update, a continued update. Uh, and then that would be to have a priority session in terms of, well, as was referenced, where do we want to uh, take the rest of this year or the rest of the, the term? In terms of what we seek to accomplish and, and uh, deliver. So that's an option, if that's helpful. Uh, or it may be that we've got a, reached a, a position because of COVID and the various uncertainties. That uh, we're prepared to restrict um, what it is we're thinking of doing going forward and trying to do a more of a hold the line. So again, it might be something that council wishes is to uh, to uh, deliberate on. Perhaps even have a motion or perhaps not. Uh, we're, we're quite happy either way. It's just a matter of what's gonna work best for the council.
Thank you. So looking at the time, I think, I just want to start with the levies, uh, unless there is a motion of council to pursue it. I think the staff can take it from us that there is no desire to pursue it at this point. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment on, on levies. I know um, Suri's position was, I believe they're not going to increase her budget more than uh, cost of living or some index. So they did that by putting in the levies, whereas we still uh, break out the percentage on a tax notice on what's capital and what is roads and what is operating. So it's another way of showing it, but there's one taxpayer, the money has to come from the taxpayer. So unless there is a, a desire by council to make a motion to have staff pursue it further at this point for this budget. Uh, and I don't see that. I think um, staff have the direction to let it lie for now. On the other one, on the uh, perhaps a, a motion to, to see if we want to move forward on January eighteenth, we've got a good discussion on the eleventh. Uh, we can have a bit of roundabout, I think, with COVID. Certainly, we can still um, uh, do our, our session in this manner. Uh, I've been on some uh, some very large uh, budget sessions and discussions uh, through Metro on this. And it's, it seems to work, al- although not ideal, but that's what we're in, so. Yeah, so I was gonna s- suggest a motion, then we can test it with council. So it's been moved by councillor Long that um, that uh, staff. Schedule a priority session on January eighteenth. Is there a Secunder?
A Secunder.
Second by councillor Whitmarsh, discussion. Call the question, all those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Councillor, whether opposed, uh, motion carries. So uh, certainly that helps, helpful to give some direction to, to staff. So it'll give us an opportunity to, to flush this out. Okay, uh, so I think with that, um, look for a motion to terminate. We have a lunch and come back at one o'clock for the regular meeting.
Termination.
Councillor Whitmarsh, second by councillor Anderson, all those in favor, opposed, and that carries. Thank you.